All right, you're good.
All right, it's December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, seven thirty-two P. M. Going to call the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present Doug Roberts, Joe Hall, Lori Semperban and Bob Shavitt. And Joe Lucia and Andy Marco aren't here. So let's see, go down, no public hearing tonight, so item D, new business, commission internal discussion of animal unit regulations.
So um, this was talked about at the last meeting. And and basically, the way we left it was that staff would do a little bit of research. And try to pull some examples from other communities as to how they regulate animal units in particular chickens. Ashley looked at some of the surrounding towns and kind of pulled together a list. And do you have it, Ashley? Do you want to share your screen? I think we emailed it as well.
Yeah, I have it in front of me.
So um, you want to pull it up?
Uh, I don't have it on my computer.
All right.
Actually, maybe I can grab it from my email.
Yeah, I have it from the email.
Well, would it be fair, Mike, to say that the town that's probably closest to us is with what they're asking for is Coventry?
Yeah, and so we obviously didn't look at. We tried to make sure that we included towns that made sense rather than just looking at, you know, because there are some towns that don't regulate them at all. And then there are other towns that regulate them more strictly than than Wellington. So we tried to look at towns that made sense where you had similar development patterns. So that, you know, the potential issues or or the the composition of the park, you know, lot size and densities of town, you know, that made sense. But and actually, weirdly enough, I can't get into my Wellington email either to share it. But did you all get it and have a chance to to look at it, or can you pull it up?
Well, I I would just like to comment that the forty thousand square feet that we have in our regulations are pretty close to Coventry's and Ashford's, I believe.
I thought ours was eighty.
Ours is eighty thousand, Bob.
Ours is eighty thousand.
Yeah, but what, when you look just at the chickens, isn't it forty thousand square feet for the lot to have like four chickens?
It's eighty thousand, six chickens, and that's for like livestock for personal use or youth projects. Other than that, like five acres gets you anything here, but you know, eighty thousand square feet, that's just under two acres.
Right, well, one point eight acres, that's our smallest building lot.
That's the smallest building lot that we require now, but the reality is many, many, many of our subdivisions are lots that are way less than that. So, you know, the challenge is some of our most, you know, most of our neighborhoods don't meet the two acre minimum. And that's where you're seeing a lot of these things come up. I mean, I think we're currently pending three or four complaints across town related to a rooster or chickens or what we've had ducks. We've had, we, you know, we have complaints come in, and that's not to say this is this is a rampant issue. But, you know, because of the way the regs are set up, pretty much any of our subdivisions are not going to have that size. And so we are holding on that enforcement to try to figure out what you guys, how you want to handle it.
And that's and that's my problem with it is that, you know, having lived in the Saint Moritz-Lucerne neighborhood, those those lots are all about an acre in size. And that's over fifty homes, and that's only one example. And but I also see that like the the homes around the green that are very small, nonconforming lots, because they were built, you know, two hundred years ago. You know, I think we have to balance having enough land that it's reasonable to have chickens, but yet not bother your neighbors with smell and, you know, that sort of thing being a nuisance. So I think an acre should be fine. That's my personal feeling as opposed to the eighty thousand square feet. I would think forty thousand would be fine.
Well, and I think I think the numbers that are mentioned in order, the the smallest lot size, when I was perusing through that material that was sent to us. The most you can have is like four chickens or six chickens if it's if the lot's very small. And and I think we're contending with greater numbers than that.
Um, I think the person that was had a hardship with our rules, I think they had like around five or six chickens. And they had like point six tenths of an acre or something like that. Mike, that woman said that she was going to be contacting some agricultural folks at Yukon for a letter. Because she was saying that she was told that research shows that there's really not much land required to to have chickens and and make them happy. Did you ever get any of that from her?
No.
No?
I think the issue is not enough room for the chickens. I think it's enough room that you're not a nuisance to your neighbors.
I I agree, Lori.
That that's and that and that's the thing that I think was centered on. I think this whole confrontation started with the around the green. And the the chickens were free range, so it's not like they were staying put.
How can they be a nuisance? It's not like a dog barking or a rooster.
Have you ever smelled chicken manure?
Yeah, I mean, there's there's people.
Don't generate that much manure.
Yeah, there's there's people down the road that have chickens.
If you have a coop under your window, I mean, if the neighbors only have half an acre and they have a chicken coop and it's right underneath your window, I would think you would get some of that smell.
So one one of the issues, and this is a twofold issue, we have to talk about the animals. But in the historic district area around the green, the anybody that builds any kind of an enclosure or structure needs to have a certificate of appropriateness go before the historic district commission. And that hasn't been done. Besides the chickens, the 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 structure that they're quote unquote being kept in hasn't come before the commission for an appropriateness part. So this is is a two-pronged thing where this thing started.
This whole thing is like kind of, it it's a bit of a slippery slope because you're going to make some people happy and probably quite a few people unhappy.
I I agree, and I think one of the things is, you know, you make mention about, you know, how horrible is it for to have half a dozen chickens. Personally, I don't find it so, but some people would hate it if they walked into your house and you were keeping mice. I mean, some people are just uncomfortable with farm animals, unfortunately. You know, and I think when even, you know, when chickens poultry are kept in a small area. It it gets difficult if you have a coop in the middle of the summer and you have a certain smell. It also depends an awful lot on how those animal, how are those, how are those fowl cared for? If you're dumping, if the individuals that keep those, keep the fowl have a tendency to just throw feed out, the possibility of getting unwanted rodents increases. That's why it's always good to keep the fowl in a coop, so they're not free range.
So I don't know if you guys have heard of the Connecticut R. C. and D., but they publish a livestock guide. And they've recently published their second guide, which is available online, and I can send a link if you're interested. But they 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 have a sample ordinance, which is similar, but perhaps a little bit more expansive than some of the ones we've outlined. And it sounds like, you know, what we're talking about are best management practices or potentially how these things are kept, right? It seems like some people might feel comfortable if they're kept properly and the right standards are met. So so they highlight Ellington. They say that the minimum lot size is twenty thousand square feet, maximum of eight birds, no roosters. It must be contained, free range is prohibited. There's a section about waste management. And that nothing shall exceed more than a certain volume or yard of of waste at any one time. And then they go on, which is very common, and I suspect if you looked at the regulations for all these towns individually, they min they list a minimum distance that any structure must be from a neighboring property. So even if you have five acres, you have to have two hundred and fifty feet, let's say, between the coop and the nearest structure. And so what that does is it prevents any interaction between the the coop and the neighbor.
Here it's five feet.
Yeah, so in all towns, I will tell you, there are many towns that have taken, that there's a term called backyard poultry, backyard animal husbandry. A lot of towns are have totally embraced it, towns like Weathersfield and Berlin and very, very developed towns compared to Wellington. And it's largely not, you know, set the town on fire, but that doesn't mean it's not come without complaints. You know, I think that there may be some flexibility in adjusting our standards. But we would have to make sure that these the nuts and bolts of, you know, the number of birds, roosters, waste management setbacks are all met. Perhaps requiring a zoning permit through staff versus just saying if you have this, it's allowed. Something to consider.
That's good info, Mike. You know, it's ironic that you use Ellington as an example. I used to live in Ellington. There's a lot of cows, there's a lot of fields for agriculture. And when they're spreading the manure, manure, I mean, it smells really bad, but, you know, people just deal with it. And, you know, they say it, you know, after a human is exposed to a certain smell, after about fifteen minutes, they're they're immune to it. And just one thing on free range chickens is, from what I understand, is these things will eat ticks, which is which is good because nobody needs them. There's an increase of Lyme and all that, so if the chickens eat ticks, that's less of a chance of, you know, Lyme disease being spread. So I understand the sensitivity as far as smell and the structure, but, I mean, a half a dozen chickens just doesn't seem like it should be the end of the world if you've got a half acre of land or whatever. And you're and you're paying attention to how you take care of them and get rid of the waste.
Agreed.
So what's the complaint around the green? Is it because the coop is too close to the boundary line?
Well, I don't think that I don't think that was conveyed during, you know, the last meeting. I think it was just that they're in they're violating against the regulations and they got to cease and desist and, you know, get rid of the birds.
Well, it's twofold. It's twofold in the historic district. One, that the structures were put up without notifying the historic district and having a certificate of appropriateness. And the chickens in one situation are about five feet away from the neighbor's house. And I haven't been over there to investigate. What I've heard was that there was about twenty birds. During the summer, they had their windows open and it was certainly, they said that there was a chicken smell coming into the house. And the chickens were very close by. The care was, I don't know, it seemed to be haphazard insofar as just throwing feet feed out there. You know, yeah, I I sympathize. I grew up in the country. I've known people in Wellington for thirty years that have kept chickens. Most everybody takes care of chickens well. Unfortunately, in this day and age, is an awful lot of people that aren't familiar with farm animals. And they don't understand the correct means of taking care of those animals. And, you know, there's, there has to be a line insofar as what what's allowed. You know, should people be able to keep chickens in a in a small setting? Well, yes, but they shouldn't be five feet from the neighbor's house. They should be, you know, if you have a small lot, if one edge of your lot is the furthest away from everybody else's structure. Those birds should be kept in that area. I don't care if it's not convenient right out the back door or not for caring for them. There are certain things that have to be taken into account. And again, as I mentioned, just like dogs or anything else, some people are more sensitive. If we like it or not, there's always going to be some sort of disagreement. And Mike, I I think we should take and look at these other ordinances. And maybe free range should be off the table. I think that takes part of the in-your-face-with-someone-else's-animals off the table.
It also like, you know, you have predators come in after birds, whether it's somebody's dog going to going after them, fox, coyote. Any of that stuff, it's food, you know, it's.
So Bob, Bob, I have a question. As far as the nonconformance in the historic district.
Yes.
So if if the folks with the chicken coop are in violation of the regulations, they probably wouldn't be able to get concurrence on their structure to have chickens to begin with. It's kind of like a chicken and the egg thing, right? They would have to be in compliance to the zoning regs before they could even request.
Well, I think the other thing.
Mike, did you hit him with that too, or just the birds?
So I don't know that I would call what they're being housed in a structure. These these, I don't have, because I'm not in town hall, I don't have access to the photos. But these guy, the the birds are in a a queen bed frame that has basically a a a clear plastic tarp over it. And they move the bed frame around the yard.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not a shed, it's not, it's not a coop that they bought a tractor supply. So the complicated part is this, you know.
It's a it's a portable portable containment device.
But, right, but what you are, but what you are getting at is correct. I don't know that based on the statute, how the enforcement procedures would shake out. But but yes, if the commission, if the Planning and Zoning Commission adopted regulations that said you could have a hundred chickens, provided you have five thousand square feet of property. If the historic district commission felt that was not appropriate in around the town green, the first step would be for them to seek the certificate of appropriateness. And if it was denied, doesn't matter if they have ten acres, they they can't put up a structure. And if we prohibit free range, then those areas, those properties would be excluded from being able to have the chickens because they've got that additional layer of review.
Mike, I I have a question. Yeah, I'm personally, I'm I'm kind of hesitant to start changing regulations every time we get a complaint when somebody, you know, gets gets a violation for the existing regulations. I'm not saying I'm not opposed to doing something with these.
Yep.
How do we get more input from more people in the town, rather than just the five of us turn around here and start to start the process of changing something based on a few squeaky wheels? I'd rather hear what a a good number of people have to say about this, because we're we're basically going to do something that could affect a good number of people in town.
So.
Change these.
You know, we could do any number of things, you know, I think it's important for the commission to have an idea of where they want to go, so that when we start to solicit feedback, it moves us in that direction rather than than sort of what do you think? Because it may be hard to to pull down a consensus.
Because my my opinion is this as well, that the enforcement's going to be extremely difficult. You have roosters all over the place now. I hear them when I go for a walk every Saturday and Sunday morning. So, you know.
Well, yeah, and and.
People don't take these these rules that seriously now.
And I think that, and this is not to to throw any previous staff under the bus, but I think the previous perspective was if your kid wants to have a couple of chickens because they're interested in farming, don't tell me about it, I'm not going to worry about it. And and so there really hasn't been a concerted effort to to deal with compliance, mostly because you need to have two acres and very few people do. That, you know, the people that have five and ten acres or have farms of fifteen, twenty, thirty, we don't get complaints about them. So I think there's been a real lack of enforcement over the last ten years or whenever this was adopted. So that is probably part of it. Things have been run rampant. And, you know, I'm not going to call Ken Slater and say, hey, let's go drop, you know, file a get a docket number in, you know, in Hartford, because this guy has some chickens. So what what ends up happening is we fall in the middle. And and so I think that's challenging. What, you know, if you wanted to, we, I mean, we could create some type of of survey and set it up. I can put it in the Wellington Wire, we can put something on our website, we can Facebook, I mean, we could do whatever you want to get input. But I think the commission should be comfortable with, we want to relax the standards or we don't, so that I can kind of structure how that feedback would kind of come in.
I think we should relax them from eighty thousand square feet. Because we do have many nonconforming lots in town, and I think there are lots of people who probably have chickens who don't have neighbors complaining. But we do have is where the chickens are right next to the house or, you know, so I I think we can, we can change our regulations to be more reasonable for people who live in those nonconforming neighborhoods that were built before these regs were here. As long as there's enough room and we have some structure, you know, no roosters and no free range or roaming or whatever you want to call it. I think that's reasonable and it still allows people to have chickens. I do know people in town that have chickens and they don't have two acres, but I haven't heard of any complaints either. So, you know, obviously, our eighty thousand square feet is, it's and it's also, if you look at the other towns, it's way more restrictive than most other towns in the area that are similar to us.
Right.
Yeah, my my opinion is I'm more in line with what Ashford has. I really think Wellington is probably more closely related to Ashford than these other towns listed. And my opinion is whether they have six chickens or six hundred chickens, if there is a problem with how they're being maintained as far as waste, smell, disease, other rodents, then that has to be addressed somehow.
That would go through the health department.
Okay.
Because there's manure management and and so they would go out and look, there's, I mean, in really extreme cases, I know in other towns we've dealt with with commercial chicken farms. We we have a a town that we support that has a commercial chicken farm, hundreds of thousands of chickens in a building. And, you know, there's there's a complaint, happens to be next to an organic vegetable farm, which creates some issues. And and the Department of Ag or, you know, from the Farm Bureau went out and actually evaluated the farming operation and determined if it was using best management. We wouldn't do that for six birds, but if there was a an issue of of manure stockpiling and and smells, rodents, flies.
Right, yeah.
All of those things would 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 come under the Health Department.
Right. And I I would think, you know, if the neighbors have a problem with chickens, of all things, they could just get a pet fox for a while.
And it could watch the hen house.
There you go.
My daughter's Jack Russell would take care of it.
Okay.
Hey, Mike, could could we by chance take a look and see what like Ellington has? So we'll get some ideas about, you know, maybe getting like was mentioned, down to what size lot Ashford deals with.
Ashford deals with less than an acre. They allow twelve birds, so you can have a quarter of an acre with twelve chickens.
Yeah, so.
That's what I'm reading.
Yeah, but again, no free range. And I I think that something needs to be specified so that the 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 birds are in some kind of a a real structure. So that the area that they take up is designated.
Yep. Well, what we can do is we can use Ellington as the baseline and then make kind of take a markup based on the conversation we're having today, because I think Ellington is only requires twenty thousand square feet, which is smaller than we've talked about. So we would want to bump that up. So maybe what we can do is send you guys a red line of Ellington that reflects this discussion and use that as a basis for a conversation. I mean, obviously, we'll schedule a public hearing, you know, if we, so we will have that input from the public. But I think that what we're going to want to do is expand it a little bit to really get into the the logistics of how this is managed as far as coop location. You know, containment of the birds, those types of things. So so we may have to beef it up, but we can do that and send it out to you with some suggested edits.
That would be helpful.
Okay. We can do that.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Like I said, Mike, I gotta, I gotta run because I have another meeting for work. But thanks for the discussion and the information that's been provided so far.
How funny, your next meeting.
Yeah. It's with China. Yep, thank you. Bye-bye. Yeah.
Okay, so if, I mean, we, I don't know if anybody has any other thing, you know, requests or homework they'd like to give us or if they're comfortable with us using that as a starting point.
I have a question, Mike. I'm looking at the other things and that just some ba, the basic stuff was put down about these other towns on the sheet. Do any of these other towns required enclosures or they or or does it matter? Do they allow free range? What is it?
I don't know if we if we captured that or if the regs even specify it. I know, like I said, some of them use words like contained, meaning they can be free range on your property. I mean, it's just like a dog can be off-leash, it just can't leave the property. I don't know, you know, contained, you know, a lot of times people have fencing that they move. Mansfield has incredibly complex animal regulations and has dealt with, you know, you know, some issues with larger animals and people having big animals on small subdivision lots. But we can dial that in if you want and try to see how how other towns, those nearby towns handle it.
Because, you know, I I think it's hard to enforce if we say, oh, it's they're going to be in a coop and nothing else. So somebody has a big enclosed pen in the backyard for him to run around in.
Right, yeah, no, I would agree that if they are, if they're on the property and they are not in someone else's property or creating a nuisance of some kind off-site. I don't know how much teeth we have to tell them they can't have them on certain parts of their own property.
I I wonder if we could in some way manage, or I don't want to use the word dictate, where the birds roost, where that structure should be located, so that it moves the birds quote unquote home, if you will, to an area that's gives some breathing space between them and the nearest house.
Yeah, I mean, you would do that through the bulk standard, so you would say, you know, shall not be less than two hundred and fifty feet from an adjacent dwelling unit. Or, you know, it would, it might, it would be complicated to say it has to be as far as possible, because what you may end up forcing them to do is is put it in the front yard or put, you know, so.
Yeah.
But through that bulk standard, you could say, you know, shall meet the minimum setbacks for accessory dwellings in this, in the, you know, our whatever zone and not less than number of feet from a dwelling unit. So even if we dial it back to an acre, if folks only have fifty feet from a neighboring house and you go with a hundred, well, then they won't be able to do it.
But you take like Schofield Road, like those houses there, you have, I used to live there years ago. You have a one acre lot, but the houses aren't that far apart.
Right, right.
You can usually put it in the back where everybody else has backyard also.
Yeah, if it's a narrow lot and you set it way, way towards the back property line, you might get it far enough away. But you guys will have to kind of figure out what the comfort level is with that distance, fifty feet to two hundred and fifty feet. But if you have houses on either side and you need two fifty, I mean, you're looking at having to have double that width, which is going to, you know, which is going to dictate the how big a lot needs to be regardless.
Yeah. Starting to work itself into being a political campaign.
I think that, I think that if we develop the proper standards, there will be comfort in that that if they're if they're managed properly. there will be comfort in that, that if they're, if they're managed properly, you know, it can be handled. We're getting complaints now and we have two acres. We're still getting, so, you know, it's obviously not working. Um, so if we try something else and it doesn't work, we try again, you know, I mean.
So this would, this would go to public hearing after we kind of have a sense of direction?
Yep, we would do the same process. We would refer it to CROG. We would schedule a public hearing, put it in the paper and then um, and then hear from anybody and the, this is informal. The commission would actually discuss the, the amendment and any, any comments from the public during the public hearing and then go from there. Um, so yeah, this would, this has to go to public hearing when we have some type of text finalized.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Man, you almost know we're not that busy when we're working on this stuff.
Yeah, well, maybe quiet agendas, but busy in the office with the, with the complaints and the calls regarding some of this stuff. But yeah, so, so, all right, well, we've got some homework to do. We'll send out a red line based on Ellington.
All right.
Go from there.
Yeah, we'll try to make life for you a little easier in the office.
That would be nice. Okay.
All right, thanks for the effort so far, Mike.
Sure, mostly Ashley, but we'll, uh, we'll keep it going.
Thank you, Ashley. All right, let's see, E, unfinished business, section 19, signs.
So we've uh, I've been working on, or we've been working on trying to implement the sign regs. And uh, moving a little slower than planned, but I want to show you kind of where we are, just to give you an idea. Um, we are trying to um, pull together graphics so that we are making it very clear, here we go, I'm going to share my screen, what, what we mean. Um, and, and I've pulled some of these things um, from other regs. Um, but, and this is very preliminary, but the idea would be that when we define a sign and we say what we expect, we then provide an example of what that sign is so that we are not debating whether this is a freestanding or pylon or this or that. Um, so I'm trying to go through and use uh, examples and, and make it very clear and then tailor the, the um, descriptions around that.
Yep.
Um, so it's just taking a little longer because a lot of towns don't have graphics um, that, that are in place and working. But um, we're still, we're still moving. Um, and I don't, I think we talked about, and it was in the other piece that I sent. Um, you know, we're going to require that all the signs be um, compliant with the standards set forth by the International Dark Sky Association, um, which is something that you guys have always looked for, but wasn't required. We're not going to be, we're not going to ask that they meet that, they have the seal because you just have to pay for the seal, but we want them to meet the standards that the association has set. Um, we're not looking to make the signs more, more expensive. We just want them to be compliant. So um, that's where we are with that. I'm still, I'm still working on it, but we've got sidetracked with, with uh, Colonel Sanders and his chickens here.
I was saying with the chickens.
Chicken's delicious.
Yeah, right, exactly. So uh, that's, that's where we are with that. Um, still working through that, but maybe what we'll do is time it so we can sort of move these both and refer them to CROG at the same time. So we're not doing uh, effort twice.
Hmm.
So that's where we are with that. I just wanted to make sure that you knew we're still working on it.
All right, so uh, G, correspondence.
Um, uh, where's my agenda?
Oh, you've been doing that chicken thing too long.
Yeah.
Wearing off.
Um, yeah, we don't, I don't think, I don't think we've received anything that's come in from any, any other agencies. Um, so I'm going, I don't think we have anything relevant to review at this point.
Oh, I forgot the approval of minutes. Sorry about that. The uh, approval of minutes from November 17th of uh, 2020.
I move to accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I abstain. I wasn't here.
Okay. H, public comment. Commission will hear brief comments at this time from anyone wishing to speak. No business can be conducted here nor can any comments be made about any items on the agenda.
Hi. I, I'm, my name is Rosalina Ching-Chi and I'm the uh, Chair of the Historic District Commission.
Yes.
And I just, I just wanted a comment about, well, it was about the chickens. But I don't, I don't, I don't know. I was, I wrote the letter in, in August initially. And um, we, we, I just wanted to speak for the commission that we, our intent is not to single out any of our neighbors. It just happens that the house on the corner of Old Farms and um, Town Turnpike is actually surrounded by over 60 fowl. If you count the house, which we forgot to include in our letter, which is also part of the historic district, the one that's a modern house that's in the lot of um, that's on 320. The two, the 243 Town Turnpike and I believe it's 242 Town Turnpike, the little, the smallest um, unit. All three of those houses are under 80,000 square um, yards, which is the current town ordinance. And all we want is for the town ordinances to be upheld and exactly to, that the person who built the coop should have asked permission to build the coop or should remove it. They still haven't done either. And that the person who has foul less than five feet away from the house of the other people, that they would uh, they're totally uh, not in compliance, both for care of the birds and uh, proximity to their neighbors. And um, I have to say that all the houses on the green are pretty small, uh, I think except the one. In terms of size, we're all under 1.88 acreage. And um, we, we know that if you had five fowl and they were in a coop and you, you might not even know they were there. But what's had happened over the course of last year was that we had the free range being chickens practically on the green. And um, it was a hazard for the chickens, not just for the humans. And then um, and then this, this other household where the coop is just a haphazard structure. It's not even a coop. And uh, they have certainly more than six chickens. So we're, we're talking about a large number of chickens and the effect on that single neighbor is pretty large and I know it seems a petty point, but I, I think all we want is enforcement of the regulations currently standing. And I just wanted to voice that and.
All right, thank you for your input, Rosa. All right, any other public comment? Okay, uh, staff report and discussion.
So the only thing that I wanted to just give you a quick heads up on or, you know, a bit of an enforcement update. Um, we have a property on, on Bellas Road and I, and I won't use the specific address, but um, you know, we've been dealing with uh, a complaint on registered vehicles. And originally they thought they were going to comply. They said they were going to comply. Now we've seen nothing. So um, as of today, it's still in violation. So we will be referring it to Ken. Um, and as much as it seems like not that big of a deal, you know, uh, the regs are the regs. And so we've issued a notice of violation. We've tried speaking with them via phone. We've repeatedly tried to reach out. We've sent the cease and desist. We have been as flexible as we can and we've run out of tools. Um, Wellington doesn't have a citation ordinance, so we, we can't use that. So um, we've referred it to Ken. What he will do is, is reach out to them and, and basically give them a, here's your last warning. The town is uh, serious about the, the regulations. And uh, if you don't comply, we'll move forward and, and hope that will encourage them to, to get things rolling. Um, and if not, we move forward. So I'm just letting you know. Um, the cease and desist expired Sunday, I think, Sunday or, or Monday. So um, that was the, the 30 days for them to either rectify the situation or appeal. They did neither. Um, so that is, that is where we are.
Does, Mike, I would, I would take it these cars are all out in plain sight, not stored in buildings or anything. That's the big issue because they're right there in your face.
Yep, yep. And, and this is not, we, I am not under the illusion that this is the only property in town that has unregistered vehicles, but you know, we, we are not arbitrary in our enforcement and we respond to complaints. And so, you know, we got a complaint, we did the inspection and um, we've been trying to deal with it and this has been going on since about the ti, you know, probably uh, August or September and we give them the 30 days. They ask for time, then we, we wait, we try to go cease and desist another 30 days. So um, this is unfortunately the downside to enforcement. That's where we are.
All right, I, I have, I have a quick question, just a point of order about our agenda and, and how it's worded. When we get the item H every meeting, public comment, you know, the last sentence reads, no business can be conducted here nor can any comments be made about any items on the agenda. And nine times out of 10, when we have someone from the public there, they comment on some item on the agenda. So is that just a toothless phrase or is that something I should shut down when?
Well, why, why do we have that there? I mean, the whole reason people come to public meetings is so that they can comment on, on things that are on the agenda because they're.
That's what I'm going at, Lori. I, I just, I don't understand why it says that if we're.
Because, because under the way that planning and zoning commissions are set up, you have applications that are approved by staff, applications that come in and approved, are approved administratively by you and then applications that come in and are special permits. Administrative reviews by you are not public hearings and are just you verifying they comply and then moving them, the application forward. And then public hearings are when we solicit feedback. We do the publishing in the paper. If we allowed public comment on anything anybody in the public wanted to speak about, any item that came before the commission would effectively be a public hearing. And so per Roberts rules, we don't want comments on things that are not public hearings because that is not the way that the structure of the commission is set up. So if we had a, a site plan approval for a, for a sign or, or for a, a, you know, something related to a farm and it wasn't a public hearing, you wouldn't want a neighbor that had a beef with the farm to come under public comment and tell you all the reasons why they didn't want you to approve it because then what you would do is have all these things on the record that someone could then say, well, wait a minute, you made that decision based on what she's, she or he said. And that wasn't a public hearing and I'm going to appeal your decision because I believe you use that to make the call.
And then they're trying to win, yeah.
So we delineate between the two and, and we add that there so that we don't get comments about things that the commission has specific guidelines for how it must make its decisions. So yes, technically speaking, if someone says, I want to talk about section 19 signs, we should say, we'll see you at the public hearing, but you can't hear you now. But you know, many commissions are, 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 shall we say, flexible in that they don't want people to feel like they don't have the right to interface with the commission. But um, yeah, I think it's less of an issue when you have things that are informal, like discussions and updates on signs and things like that because there is no uh, decision currently before the board. But.
Can, can we change the wording then to say that no comments can be made about any item? Um, that's a, that's being voted on or any item that's on the public, that's on the public hearing, you know?
I think.
He's, somebody coming and talking about the chickens just now fits in fine with our conversation, gives us more information because it's an informal discussion, but that is different than when we're having a, you know, a legal um, item that.
Well, o- obviously if we had a public hearing that's ongoing or closed and somebody starts trying to talk about it down there, you can't do it.
I think, yeah, I mean, I think that probably nine times out of 10, what, you know, you would be fine if we adjusted the wording to say about any applications on the agenda. But again, if someone had said, you know, if someone had come before you and said, well, you know, let's talk about chickens, you know, I've, I've lived in New York City and we had them there and it wasn't a problem. You said, all right, well, I think you're okay. Let's start the public hearing, the reg at 20,000 square feet. The problem is other people that want to participate aren't privy to the fact that those conversations took place a month or two ahead of time because it wasn't noticed as a hearing. And so anything that you hear that you determine, determine to make sense that you now use to build your framework for the discussion, the idea is when it's a public hearing, everybody has all these same information. Um, and so I think that, yeah, it's, it's tricky, probably not going to create some major procedural defect. Um, but technically speaking, you know, it would be not anything on the agenda. Um.
I, I just feel a little, you know, I, I'll do it if that's the, the right, but I, I feel bad shutting people down like, you know, with, with it, with some of these things, you know? Obviously, if it was like a public hearing that we just closed, there's something we wouldn't say a word about it, but.
Let me see, let me think about it a little bit. Let me see if there's something we can do. Maybe what we, I'm trying to think about there being some way that I can, I can create an agenda item that would be a standing agenda item that, that would be sort of a, a, a public informational topic or something. Acknowledging there would be dialogue, like you have a public informational meeting or something, because it's not a public hearing based on statute. Um, let me, let me chew on that a little bit. If there's something we can do, I'll try to roll it into the next agenda. If not, I'll try to give you a reason as to why it's not a good idea.
Well, like, like the prior meeting we had, you know, a few weeks ago, like when, when the complaint came up and then the lady that got the complaint started.
Right.
That, that just felt a little, a little bit off to me, you know, because.
Yeah, well, per Roberts rules, yeah, that was totally on her end, totally inappropriate. Um, and you know, when she called the office, I tried to explain to her that this was not the way for her to voice her opinions because it wasn't a hearing. So yes, that's where it gets tricky and complicated and procedurally can create errors that we don't want to get in the middle of. So let me.
And we also don't want the commission weighing in on something that's a violation of our current rules. You know, there's an avenue, like, you know, which, which you explained to her, which was ZBA and.
Right, yeah. So let me think about it. Let me see, i- i- it's a point well taken. I, um, so let me see what we can do. We don't have bylaws, so we wouldn't need to amend bylaws to talk about how we would add a new agenda item. We, we don't need to get anything complicated, but let me think about it. Let me, let me chew on it.
Appreciate it. You know, it's obviously not a perfect world, but like the, the best we can do is just keeping these things on point and, and appropriate would be great.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, general converse, just general comment can certainly add background for what we're trying to understand and trying to get to the bottom of. Uh, we just don't want to step on our own toes here.
Right, and that's why when we added new business, I put commission internal discussion because I wanted people to read the agenda to understand we're not at the point of having a hearing yet. So you don't, I wouldn't want people to come out and think now's the time to tell them how we feel because I wanted you guys to have a chance to talk about it internally and get comfortable. But um, all right, let me think on it, see what I can do if anything.
All right, thank you.
So did, did the minutes pass with an abstention? I always get confused on that.
Yes. If you abstain, it goes with the majority of the vote.
You mean it, it counts as one of the number of people?
Right.
You're saying, okay. All right, thank you.
So you basically have a quorum here and three of us voted for it. All right. So it's eight 22, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome. See you next.